Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the City of Farmers Branch Study Session Meeting. It is November 17th, 2020. The time is 3:00 PM. We will begin with A1, Discuss Regular Agenda Items. Councilmember Rotana.
I have a, yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question on consent on J7. So it appears that we're outsourcing our sweet street sweeping. And I remember back in 2015, we bought with the sewer and water fund, we bought our own street sweeper. So I was just wondering what what happened here and why we're making the switch. Is it broken down? Is it no longer economically feasible? What's the reason for the the new street sweeping program?
No, sir. Ever since we picked up the stormwater fund, we've been outsourcing sweet sweeping from that point on.
But they use our sweeper?
No, they have their own equipment. But we also purchased one for us because we would use them part of the time and then we would go and do partial time sweeping also. There's a lot of times that we use a sweeper for like after a water main break to clean up the streets, just other times that we have a, we find some, something that needs to be cleaned up, we'll go and clean up glass in the street from a car accident, stuff like that. We will actually use our sweeper to go use it. Now, we do even when we're doing the road projects up here, the contractors typically have a broom that just throws. So we, ours is a vacuum, we'll go clean that up too. So so we are using it at the same time while we're also outsourcing the the street sweeper.
Great, thanks, Mark. I appreciate that. That's all they had there.
Okay, Councilor Lynn.
So I also have a question regarding J7, please. And that was, obviously, since we're outsourcing this service, is there any savings to the city? Or are we still having to keep and maintain the existing sweeper that we have?
There was discussion. We are still keeping it. We do own it. And it was just came apparent that we've already spent the money to buy the machine. I don't think the the maintenance on it is that high. So we're gonna, we're gonna use it for the life of whatever the machine will give us. And then at that point, then we'll have to make another decision. Do we buy another one? Or do we outsource all sweeping entirely? But at this stage in the game, we already own it. We might as well use it to, for as much life as got in it. And I think that's been what we call with five more years? About five more years until it's.
Do we see any savings? Are we reducing staff by one or?
Well, we're not, I don't know necessarily if it's, we're saving any money. It's not costing us anymore at this stage. Because it's, we have employees that are in the sanitation department and then in public works that use it. And we don't hire just somebody just to use the machine, but we put somebody in it when we need to. So so it's not really costing us anymore. It's already paid for. So it's just the operational and using it. So that's why we determined for the next five years, we'll continue to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, there, items. Okay, Councilmember Bonner.
Yes, I thought this is probably a good time and the right place to have our discussion about K3. Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Pro Tem?
L3.
L3, excuse me. And I was, you know, Mayor, I was wondering what, you know, your thought process was on that in terms of continuation. I know John's been the deputy mayor, you know, has done a great job with that. Assume you would want to continue. But anyway, just didn't know if there was going to be a discussion about that.
Yeah, usually the discussion around this item usually happens May, early June, which is after our traditional elections. But because everything was pushed, you know, now that we're coming back through what is kind of a new council cycle, I figured it's at least time to have that discussion. And in my opinion, you've six, seven, eight months left, figured might as well let you continue in that role, at least from my recommendation. Just, you know, watching the way you've handled it and the way you represent the city and the issues when I'm not available. Just kind of been pleased with, I know it's a decision of the entire council, but that's just my opinion of the the job you've done. And then in terms of deputy mayor pro tem, my recommendation for until we come to the next election cycle would probably be to recommend Councilmember Rotana fill the deputy mayor pro tem role for that period as well. And so I'm willing to open it up for conversation. You know, this is everyone's kind of collective decision on who's going to do that. But that is my current recommendations at the moment. So if anyone wants to add her way in, they may do so.
I'm happy to continue to serve. I kind of viewed this as, since we're six months out of cycle and we're continuing on with the year, just we just finish up and back once we got it back on a regular cycle, that we'd make make any switches. I'm happy to continue to serve and back you up where possible. So if that's what everybody wants to do, I'm happy to do it.
Councilor Lynn.
So I had expressed interest last year in being mayor pro tem, but obviously, that was not the case. And I suppose, I'm only guessing that the motivation for changing the deputy mayor is because, well, there's probably personal factors involved there. If there's something in particular that I've done as deputy mayor pro tem, I would certainly like to know now. That that has caused this need to switch.
I'll make a comment on that. I think that this is not necessarily the forum you want to take this down. I don't think it benefits anybody. It's something you and I have discussed together on a number of occasions about process and the aggressiveness of your discontent of the direction of the council. And at times, you know, standing room for your values. And I understand your values are important. But at the same time, turning it at times personal. And, you know, I think it's apparent to everyone that you don't have a great working relationship with the mayor, the newly appointed, reappointed mayor. And I think that it's in the best interest of the city to have a leadership staff that is working together and not to to work apart. That's a single opinion.
Do you want to respond? Or do you want me to go?
Scripted it out.
Scripted it out, huh? No. You know, I just, I just look at the missteps that have happened in this past year from the start of COVID until now, in terms of a lot of messaging that you've been responsible for that wasn't well received and was more divisive than it was moving people together in a, I guess, a path forward for our community that reflected us in the best light. And not having that trust that you were going to deliver a message that is is kind of working on and kind of come to consensus on, you know, for me, that would be why I would remove you from that position. Because in the event that John couldn't do it, I don't know that I have full trust for you to deliver that message. And I go back to the situation at the Wyndham. I go back to some of your stuff regarding the police task force. I go back to the situation most recently at Brookhaven College during the election, and just what might be an egregious misuse of title. So, you know, with some of those things, that's where I'm like, I'm, after that, I was kind of like, you know, I'm willing to to move on from this and allow someone else to take that position. And that is my feelings.
Well, you're certainly entitled to your opinion. You made some pretty broad statements. I don't even know Brookhaven College. I don't know what you're talking about. Yes, I had questions about visitors staying at the Wyndham Hotel during the COVID period and voiced those. They were answered by the city manager. And so, you know, I wasn't the one who sat here and accused somebody of being bought and sold by a developer. Okay? And, you know, that was a pretty ballsy thing to say. And it was an outright lie, too. But unfortunately, as public servants, you know, we have to sit here and take some of this stuff. And if you want to make a change, that's fine. I still have my time on council. I don't think anybody in this city can doubt the effort, the passion that I put forth in working and trying to serve this city and fighting for my constituents. And, yeah, I've been on the short end of the stick on a lot of things because we have some personal disagreement politically. So that's fine if you want to do that. I mean, I'm still here. I'm still serving. And nothing's going to change that. And and as far as, you know, what you said, you know, I'd be happy to sit down with you and hear specifically what you're talking about. Because you made some broad statements. I don't even know what you're, what it is that you're talking. So let's let's spare that here. But know that we still have to work together. And I've tried to put an olive branch out to you, Mayor, and have been rebuked many times by you. So, and you don't even acknowledge my presence at at events. Last week at the Veterans Day event, walked right past me, didn't even say hello. That's not good for the city. And even when I sent you a congratulatory note for getting reelected, you didn't even respond. So that's on you.
I would say fair, but when people show you who they are, believe them. Does any other council member have anything to say? Councilmember Tom?
I'll definitely defer to the will of the council, but I just wanted to make sure to advise that I would be honored to serve as deputy mayor pro tem over the last few years. And even on P&amp;Z, I've showed that, my dedication to our city. And I'm willing to and hoping to be able to work together with our leadership to ensure that we can continue to move in the right direction for our residents. So I, again, I'll defer to the will of the council, but I did want to let you know that I would be honored to serve as deputy mayor pro tem if if that should be the case. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Blackson, do you have anything, even though you won't be here for the vote?
Since I got a say, I may as well say something. You know, I, I guess I've sat here for 42 months and I didn't sniff either deputy or mayor pro tem. And I didn't, you know, I didn't see an issue with it. I just felt like it, it was, you wanted to do it, or you wanted to do it, or you wanted to do it. And that's just kind of where it where it is. But, you know, I guess the hardest part, Terry, is you chose the side of the stick that you're on, you know? And that's, you chose the side of the stick that you're on. It's not the, we didn't put you on a short side. You put yourself on a short side of the stick. And that's the hard part is when it's, it's, it's a, you know, it's a constant. And I hate that it's become a, so divisive and that it just is not, it doesn't work for the city. It's not good for our city. So that's, that's all I have to say. But I will support John and Crystal.
Does anyone else have any other comments or discussion surrounding L3? All right. Seeing none, we will pick that back up. In the regular session, Councilmember Baumgartner, you have any other items you'd like to discuss at this time?
None others. So this time.
Okay, Councilmember Blackson.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time.
We will move on to A2, Discuss Potential Bring Your Own Alcoholic Beverages BYOB Regulations for Establishments Not Licensed by the Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission, TABC. Ms. Fergens.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Tina Fergens, Director of Planning. So before you is a proposed ordinance that was included in your packet related to a proposed bring your own alcoholic beverage ordinance. As you're well aware, the city currently allows banquet halls and event centers within our community. In light of some recent events that have occurred in neighboring cities with respect to these types of venues, and the ability of the patrons to be able to bring alcoholic beverages on the premise for on-premise consumption, we believe it's appropriate to consider establishing this proposed ordinance for the City of Farmers Branch. So included in your packet is the proposed ordinance for just your consideration and discussion this afternoon. Depending upon the direction that we receive this afternoon, we will then potentially be bringing the final ordinance back for adoption in December. So this ordinance would pertain to those establishments that are not regulated by the Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission. In order to regulate these types of establishments, we're proposing to require the establishments to have a permit. The ordinance goes through many requirements associated with the permit. I've highlighted a few of the items here. Couple of things I'd like to point out are that the permit would be good for one year with an opportunity for renewal. For those establishments that are not operating in accordance with the city's ordinance, the permit could be revoked. And then also, the permit cannot be transferred to another entity because one of the components associated with this is criminal background checks. So if the permit is approved, it cannot be transferred to another entity without getting the permit, you know, reapproved and going through that appropriate approval process. Within the ordinance, we are proposing to establish hours of operation limitations. Essentially, establishments would be required to close at 2:00 with all of the patrons being off the premises by 2:30. The reason why we proposed or proposed the 2:00 AM provision is that is consistent with the fact that Dallas County allows for late hours permits. So it's consistent with other venues that we have that sell alcohol for on-premise consumption. So we also include provisions in the proposed ordinance regarding when peace officer is required and the ratio of the peace officers being provided as well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, entertaining comments that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fergens, for the presentation. Councilmember Rotana, do you have any questions?
No questions per se to the ordinance. I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. But do you, do you feel like this would kind of, this will help us with some of the issues that are going on in some of the areas of our city moving forward? Or is there anything else that you feel should be included to ensure that we're able to kind of mitigate some of those issues moving forward?
I believe it's a good start for us. And we've tried to address all of the potential concerns, particularly with, in consultation with our city attorney. So we believe we have a solid ordinance moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
And if for some reason, certain issues did arise in the future, we could always amend the ordinance at that time.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Norwood.
I have no questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Lynn.
So Tina, thank you for the presentation. I had a meeting the other day with Chief Hale, who shared his thoughts about this with me. I was not aware that we were having issues, and I'm going to say on Sigma specifically, because I think that's what this is, the root of this is coming from, a business that's operating till 5:00 AM over there. And so I started doing some investigation. And neighbors in the area have had multiple issues with this business that's open until 5:00 AM, with vehicles being broken into, vehicles stolen, businesses being broken into. And it, it's creating just a general nuisance and loss of income for businesses over there. So I took steps to go and have a meeting with some of the business owners. And they expressed their frustration to me with what is going on. And I was just presented a list of, I don't know how many's on this list, 80 people? 80, 80 business owners over there that have issues also with respect to this business being open until 5:00 AM. I really see no benefit to the city as to why we would allow congregations of folks till 5:00 AM or later. And we're not Deep Ellum. I hate to compare ourselves to Dallas, but there is a place where there are clubs that are open late night. And supporting a 2:00 AM cutoff, I think, is the appropriate thing to do for the City of Farmers Branch. That's what business owners are willing to endorse. And the police department, according to Chief Hale, indicates that that would be favorable to them in being able to control crime and 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 some of the related problems that we have with that, with those types of businesses. And the fact that TABC will not go in and spot check this business or any other business that hosts a BYOB event. They're happening on a regular basis on Sigma, so this is nothing new. We just don't know everything that's going on on the inside. But I think if you listen to the neighbors, the business residents of the city, they'll tell you that this is an issue and and we need, we owe it to them to stop it.
Do you, as the ordinance is written, do you propose the changes that are being made? Or are you in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Baumgartner?
No questions.
Councilmember Blackson.
Well, I kind of share a little bit different take on this because, can you hear me? Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you better now. Thank you.
My business sits 600 feet from this location. And I would think that we've dealt with some of these issues. So I'm not in favor of the way the ordinance is written right now, period. And as a business owner, I think that it's not hard to sway the rest of them over there. If they could, if they felt like they could get it more restrictive, they would be in favor of that. So at this time, I would support midnight, maybe 1:00 AM, but they'd have to have a permit. Just like we require Mary McAilliffe to have a permit to put the Big Ten out there. If you want to have a wedding or a venue or something that that late at night is going to run late, then you need to apply to do that, period. But I don't want to go any further into issues, but they do exist. And this is not new at all. This has been going on for a while. And it's, it's long overdue. But there's no, there's no returning value that they're, they're giving to us. Because it's not like they're collecting sales tax and turning it over to the city. I mean, we could probably pull them up real quick and see what they've paid in sales tax to the town. And it's, it's very minimal. And I think that it, when it has the, when it's affecting businesses and they're, you know, it had a truck broken into, have all kinds of issues going on over there. So you know what? That's, and I don't know that it's connected, but I don't know that it's not. And until we disconnect, I won't know that it's not. So right now, I would support midnight, period. Just make it easy. And if we're going to do midnight, and someone wants to come have a wedding there, that's great. They can apply to be open until 4:00. But at least we know, and they have all these rules to do with. But I look at the, what value we we get from 12 to 2:00, it's, return on investment's zero. You know, we just have people that are more intoxicated, you know, in our town. And, you know, what good, there's, it's, I don't know. But I'm completely non supportive of the way it's written right now. I would support midnight, and I would maybe consider one, but that's as far as I would go.
Okay.
I'm going to go back through one more time. But, you know, Councilmember Blackson, I would, I would support midnight as well, especially as it relates to this kind of situation as it pertains to BYOB and these events. I do agree that, you know, after midnight, there's no additional value, value to be gained. But, you know, look to the rest of the council based on those comments to see if they, people or council members are reconsidering in their previous positions. But Councilmember Tom?
I would be supportive of that, especially because we wouldn't be disallowing folks to be able to apply for a permit in case they do have a wedding that maybe they want to go over 1:00 o'clock. But at least we would know and staff would have the opportunity to review what the purpose is and whatnot. So I would be supportive of that.
Councilmember Norwood.
Let me take a step back. So Tina, doesn't this, doesn't Sigma fall within the entertainment overlay that we approved last meeting?
It does.
And doesn't that entertainment overlay allow for bars?
It does.
And so bars are allowed by the TABC to be open until 2:00 AM?
That is correct.
So it makes sense to me to not have a more restrictive ordinance that's going to impact our entertainment overlay. We don't know that this won't solve the issues. It probably, it may or may not. And if there are specific issues with this one specific facility, I would say, I would tend to be less restrictive. Maybe that's just my nature. I tend to give less restriction, more freedom, that kind of thing. And then once it proves that there is a additional problem, we can always go back and amend the ordinance. So I guess I would be more in favor of sticking with the ordinance until such time as it's proven to be ineffective. Because I don't want it to hamper our overall future growth as we're looking at potential for other types of entertainment venues within the the entertainment overlay. So that would be where I'd come down. So I'm supportive of the ordinance as it's currently written. I do, I am sympathetic to to Councilman Blackson's position, especially being as close as he is. But I don't want to write the ordinance for one specific business. So that's kind of where I come down.
One quick question. This is specifically for BYOB businesses, correct?
That is correct. So it's going to be establishments that are not regulated by TABC. So, you know, for example, bars, breweries. We do have some banquet event centers that have catering license where the caterers provide the alcohol. So they're, you know, they're regulated by TABC. So this is for the establishments that are not addressed by TABC. And just, you know, over there off of Sigma, we do have two banquet event centers. One is actually in a holder specific use permit ordinance. When it was done, there was an hours of operation restriction put in place till midnight for every evening or for every day of the week. The other one at 4347, it has no hours of operation restriction. So it's, we, because I was looking to see where we've allowed other banquet hall facilities and if we've put any hours of operation restrictions on them. So just to see how our proposed ordinance stacks up with this. So in this case, one of the properties that's over on Sigma would be, their SUP limits them to midnight anyway, regardless if they were doing BYOB. I believe they do have a catering license because the specific use permit was also granted for alcohol sales at that location. But this other location at 4347, there's no hours of operation restriction, and they do not have a specific use permit for alcohol sales either. So that's where, you know, this ordinance comes into play to regulate them.
Yeah, and my point was that, you know, if we have other facilities that would potentially operate there that have, are selling alcohol later, then this would be kind of, we'd be more restrictive on those. The other question I forgot to ask was on the Beltline, the 1-800-FLOWERS with the banquet facility. Do we know anything about there, any restrictions on them?
So the facility that's on Beltline, their specific use permit, they're, let's see, they're required to close at 12:00 midnight. With exception on Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings, they're able to go till 1:00 AM. And so that was done as part of their specific use permit.
Right. So we're kind of all over the map then?
We are, and we've had some others that have been granted, but they were interim specific use permits, so some of them have since expired. And again, they range, you know, one was till 10:00 PM, another one was till midnight as well. So when we did the zoning on banquet hall type facilities, we were a little all over the place as well. So, you know, we proposed the 2:00 AM, again, just because knowing the fact that Dallas County allows for the late hours, we felt from an enforcement standpoint that that would be more consistent and be able to assist with our enforcement officers with having to, you know, patrol and potentially investigate these establishments if anyone was operating incorrectly.
Okay. Thank you, Tina.
Councilmember Lynn.
So at the last council meeting, we passed this entertainment overlay district for the east side of the city. And knowing that we wanted to attract restaurants, bars, taverns, breweries, and I'm trying to recall all the things that were mentioned in particular, cigar lounge, whatnot, and there's, I guess, movie theaters. So there's no problem with that. We're willing to do that because the east side of the city is changing. And so we recognize that, and the lifestyle that many of the residents are going to be living over on the east side, we have to have entertainment opportunities for them and dining opportunities and whatnot. When I considered that, in thinking about this, I didn't see how we could be more restrictive than what TABC is already allowing restaurants and bars to do, which is to serve till 2:00 AM. So my guess is that the business owners that I've spoken with would probably appreciate something being more restrictive, but I'm not sure this is one of those things, because it might hurt some of those other competing venues that have events also that want to run later. 2:00 AM seems to be the standard. It's a state standard as far as TABC is concerned, and our police know what to be on the lookout for come 2:30 in the morning. And so rather than try to create additional problems for them having to look for other things, it, I don't know that there's any good way of saying this, there's, if the bad stuff's going to happen, and I'm talking the DWIs and whatnot, then we're seeing that coming from Addison, going back to Dallas, we're seeing it from Dallas, going north on Midway Road, we're going to see it around this time at 2:30 in the morning from the facility on Sigma. So I'm trying to make people's jobs easier in that regard in terms of enforcing it. The other thing is, and I left out a point earlier, they'd have party, this facility can have party till 5:00 AM on essentially a school night, and I think they have one on a Thursday coming up. And we have kids that attend several private schools that are in that area, teachers that are arriving early. So you've got an event that's going till 5:00, you got sometimes teachers arriving at school 6:00, 6:30 in the morning to get a jumpstart on their lesson plan, and you've got debris in the streets and whatnot from that party that just ended. And it's quite evident that the proprietors of one establishment are not able to adequately police the neighborhood and pick up their trash and whatnot. So 2:00 gives them a little more time to get that done. And hopefully, I'm hoping that we don't have to establish a late night code enforcement position that goes out and specifically looks at these things. We're trusting business owners to do the right thing by the city and clean up after their mess or after their patrons, and to ensure that the area is well-kept. That's not happening now. So 2:00 is what I'm, I'm stuck on. I just don't know that it's, I think it's too onerous for us to take on the responsibility of trying to maintain or say midnight or 1:00.
Thank you, Mayor. You're mixing apples and oranges, okay? Those are licensed by TABC, have those late hours of operation, as said by state law. What we're trying to address is those establishments who allow people to bring in alcoholic beverages. They've got to be treated just like a TABC establishment, those same hours of operation. That's one piece of the pie. The other one is hours of operation in general without regard to alcohol. And in the past, we've set hours of operations and special permits, and other times at councils, I don't want to set hours of operation. So this is a good tool to start with, that we need to have for that gap. And if we still have problems, we need to, we need to address the issue whether or not we want to have hours of operation in general for entertainment venues or other types of venues. And just remember that next time someone comes up for a special permit about setting the hours of operation, because there's two different things. Hours of operation without regard to alcohol, and then those who are licensed by TABC and those who want to allow BYOB.
Thank you, Pete. Councilmember Baumgartner.
Yes, I've got a couple of comments. But one is, I think there's a big difference between a business that operates five to seven days a week, and they serve alcohol, and, you know, they're going to deal with issues ongoing because they're going to protect their business, and they're going to make certain that they manage that safely as opposed to a one-off party where people come in. And I think for us, it's thinking about, what are the kinds of events we want to occur in our city? You know, I've been to a lot of weddings. I don't think I've ever been one where the wedding party lasted past 10, or past midnight. And the people, there may be others who wanted to continue the party, but they went somewhere else, you know? And it was an option, that option will be available for them to go down the street and stop in a bar and meet somewhere and do whatever, you know, till 2:00 AM. So, you know, to me, I think, you know, Bronson's concept of midnight, you know, for the kind of events that we would want to have, to me seems wise. You know, I think it protects our businesses, that there's going to be a requirement of police, so we don't need to send code enforcement to check them out, because we're going to have police officers there that know that the cutoff is midnight, and, you know, well, that should be one of their processes, right? It's just making certain that it shuts down and people are leaving. So I think Bronson's idea is better for Farmers Branch, for the businesses of Farmers Branch and the city, and will still, you know, provide an opportunity for the type of events that we really would want to support, and it would discourage the type of events that we would not want to support as a city. So that's my thought process on it.
Councilmember Blackson.
You know, obviously, my position's not changed, but it's, I think that we're, we need to make sure that this is, this is not a one ordinance, a one business ordinance. This is to head off some of the issues that have been ongoing over there. And I think that it's, it's not saying they can't do it, it's just saying they have to apply for a special event permit or whatnot. Just, I compare it to what, like, the elementary school I mentioned a second ago that has the big carnival.
Barry Macleod.
Barry Macleod having their big carnival once a year where they have to apply for the thing and have the Big Ten out there. So, you know, that's the hard part. It's, whenever it's costing businesses over there, and it's cost my business over there, that, I take a little bit different approach on this. And it'd be one thing if there was a return for the city, but they're not paying insurance or they're not paying, there's no, there's no capture of tax back to the city. There's no capture of any, anything back to the city. So that's where I struggle with, with the idea of wavering from midnight. I really do.
I'm going to go one more round on this. Councilmember Rotan.
I'm still favorable for the midnight. I think that there needs to be a differentiation between a TABC business, which I think that the entertainment, the entertainment overlay is for, we want to bring those types of businesses, we want to bring those bars, bring those businesses, and those are the businesses that are, can't be controlled being under a TABC license. And I think that, I've heard a lot of issues around there, and I do think that this is a great first step. But based on, especially based on what I've heard today, I still feel like midnight is warranted. And again, we can always change it either way, but we also want to make sure that with this new entertainment overlay, people understand it is a safe area as well, and they don't have to worry about those types of instances or those types of things happening within our city limits. And I think this is a great way to help mitigate that. So I'm so supportive of the midnight, the midnight ordinance for this.
Councilmember Norwood.
Nothing's changed for me. The, it appears that we're split. It's not on for action anyway, right?
No. You just need to provide directions.
I would like you to hear from Chief Hale, though, just to get, hear your thoughts on this whole thing and midnight versus 2:00 AM. I could, I could be swayed either way, but for right now, I'm on the original ordinance.
Evening, Mayor and Council. David Hale, Police Chief. I think the, probably the sticking point is going to be, the hook that TABC gives you from a licensed establishment keeps them, it's easier to keep them in line per se because they have the ability to lose their beverage license. And once they lose their license and their primary duty, their primary business is, you know, 51% alcohol sales, then that's a hook. And they're, we can enforce those rules under the law, but so do they. And so they specialize in enforcing those rules under TABC. So that's where the 2:00 comes in, and because Dallas is a county of its size, it gives us, it gives extended hours. It would, to operate, you know, up until 2:00 is, is kind of the standard, is what I would say. Does it make it easier on us to make the hours earlier? Probably. But the reality of it is, is that the other establishments, and this is, you know, in the area with the, knowing the information about the entertainment district, it's going to put everybody kind of on an even playing field. We know what hours drunks are on the road. We call it drunk 30, and it's about two, between 2:15 to 2:30. And so we're already kind of gearing up at that time to have our officers getting on the main thoroughfares to see if people are driving drunk on our roadways and making them unsafe. And so from that perspective, with what I know we're trying to accomplish out there, I don't have a problem with the 2:00 because it's our normal operation to know when we're supposed to be out doing what we're supposed to be doing, and it kind of lines everybody else up kind of on an even playing field from, from a fairness perspective, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn.
So I'm waffling on my own statement, because I'm open-minded and I listen to arguments. And, you know, my, the way a BYOB business is operating now does create great heartburn for me. I see no benefit of anything happening after 2:00 in the morning, and that's just not Farmers Branch, okay? So if the consensus is to cut off a, or enforce a midnight cutoff for a BYO-type, BYOB business, I'll support what the consensus says. But I think before we make a final judgment on this, I'd like to hear from some of the other folks involved in this, whether it's today or when we get to a ordinance hearing, and give them the opportunity to weigh in on this, because there are other event centers. I believe most have catering licenses, so they fall under those TABC guidelines. I don't know if there are others that do not, but I at least want to be able to hear. And I think it would be good to hear from the businesses themselves that are going to be most affected by this.
And I think the businesses have an opportunity to email all of us in the interim, and we'll have their ability to speak when we bring something forward that has potential action on it instead of right here in study session. So, you know, we will make sure that they have the ability to do that. Councilmember Lynn. Councilmember Baumgartner.
I've said all.
Same for Councilmember Blackson. Okay. You want, you want more? Okay. I mean, based on that, I think we kind of have a general consensus of where we need to move to, at least for if we come forward. We'll address it at a future council meeting.
All right. We'll amend the ordinance accordingly.
Thank you. Next is a three, discuss potential options regarding placement of accessory structures. Mr. Pender.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Keith Pender, Director of Community Services. Let's see here. I talked to you tonight about some accessory structure options for this evening. So those of you may recall, we've been down the road of accessory structures before. So a little background on that, it's covered in the Article 2.9 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. There are two basic types of accessory structures. We have either physically attached or within 10 feet of the main building, which we call attached, and then there's physically detached, and that's things that are more than 10 feet away from the main building. So as you may recall, Article 2.9 was recently revamped in July of 2019 to tip, to basically become generally simpler to do accessory structures all the way around. And then the zoning board of adjustment hears any requests for variances with respect to that article of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. So two cases that I think most of you are somewhat familiar on have come before the ZBA and have failed for lack of a property hardship. So the question, or discussion I would like to have with you today is, is Article 2.9 too strict in not allowing citizens to full use of their property? Or is Article 2.9 performing as we intended when we modified it? Only 2% of the... we intended when we modified it? Uh, only 2% of the, um, I wrote 101 in here, but to date it's about 110 now, um, have been issued successfully without any issues. Um, attached accessory buildings shall comply with provisions of Section 2.9a3 and the following development standards. So these are the ones I kind of want to hone in on here is the location of an attached accessory building shall comply with the front, side, and rear setback of the main building on the property. So that was one of the issues that came before the ZBA. And then a detached accessory building shall observe a side yard setback measured to the wall of the building that is, and in this particular case, equal to that of the main structure when it faces a street. So for attached accessory structures, the existing, kind of went over the existing requirement there. So I've got a couple of options that I would propose and that I'd like to discuss, um, today. Um, so for an attached accessory structures that are open on all sides, not including the main building to which it's attached, uh, could extend to within five feet of the rear property line provided a no build easement could be obtained from the adjacent property owner. Uh, and that's basically obtaining written, also obtaining written permission from each side property owner. And so the examples of that would be like a patio cover or pergola. So not an enclosed structure, not a detached garage or anything like that. So the goal in that is to maintain a fire separation distance of at least 10 feet. That's in our construction codes. So Councilman Baumgartner, I know, uh, the gentleman in your district that wanted to do the patio cover that basically covered his whole rear yard. This would give him a little bit of option. He would have some skin in the game at making a five foot setback and then obtaining the additional five feet through a no build easement and then getting the permission from each adjacent property owner on the sides.
Actually, but, but then maintaining a 10 feet between buildings?
Right. So there's no building back on the golf course property, but if they came back at a later date and wanted to build something, they would have to maintain that same distance.
You're not talking about between the house and the structure?
Correct. So I'm going to jump onto the other one. I've got some pictures we can look at later, but I'll get through the, the boring stuff first. So on a detached accessory structure, the current requirement is a side yard setback equal to the main structure when it faces a street lot line. So option for that would be on a detached accessory structure that are 200 square feet or less and not greater than 10 feet measured at the roof peak in height, uh, could be placed three feet from the side lot line, um, provided a solid opaque fence of at least six feet in height is provided around the rear yard. So example for that would be again, a small storage shed. So an enclosed patio cover or a pergola. And the goal for that would be to allow flexibility in placement of smaller sheds, uh, adjacent to streets with additional screening in place. So again, Councilman Baumgartner, I think in your district, you had, uh, a constituent who built a storage shed, uh, in a wrong area of his lot, but it's actually screened by an eight foot fence and you really can't even see it. And that was his beef all along, uh, but that was not a property hardship. So the ZB turned him down. So, um, with that, I will jump to any discussion you'd like to have. Um, if there's other options you would like to see, these are some that I've come up with, but for frame of reference, I'll scoop forward and show you some of the pictures. So this is the particular one, uh, at the corner of Pebble Beach and Southern Pines. You can kind of see the storage shed in the aerial right there. So because this Southern Pines is a side yard, the accessory structure has to be set back in line with the main structure. And for this particular homeowner, that represented the best place to put his storage shed was over, kind of tucked away in the corner. Some pictures from his backyard and you can, you can see here, he had to show us the peak of that. You can't see it over his fence. Barely see it looking back south on Southern Pines. So that was the second scenario. The first scenario, um, this is the, the first scenario is not built. The second scenario was built, obviously. The first scenario is a proposed plan. You can see the patio cover back here. This particular house is set way back from the front setback. So he has very small rear yard. He's got patio cover placed here. So it's adjacent basically to the property line on this side, on the left side, and then adjacent to the rear property line. And so just a picture, it was proposed to be a, kind of an open gabled type patio cover, but it was, it essentially covered the entire rear yard, the entire 20 feet of his rear yard. And just some pictures. Um, I think he was replacing the pool deck, which is generally not a problem to have a pool deck, uh, out that far, but he wanted to cover it as well. And so this is a view from the back of the Brookhaven Country Club. Obviously there's nothing built typically on their property. Um, so from a fire separation distance, it wouldn't cause grave concern to us, but again, it is one case. So that was the end of the pictures. So I'll go back and I'm happy to entertain any discussion or other options that you may have, direction, questions?
Councilmember Baumgartner, I'm going to start with you this time.
Yeah. So my, my comment was is on both of these examples, uh, I, I looked at it and they weren't not, they were not, you know, what, what's our purpose for the ordinance? Right? Fire safety, safety is one. Neither one of these structures would, would cause an issue with that. The other is view from your neighbors and, uh, neither of these obstructed any views. Uh, you know, and then I think it, it's your backyard, you know, you should have, you know, they're about, the second one has a 20-foot backyard. If you got to be back 10 feet and you put a 10-foot, you know, and that would only leave 10 foot for the structure. And the way the sun comes, it doesn't give you any protection from the sun on a three o'clock, four o'clock in the afternoon. Terry, Councilman Lynn and I went and, and saw that property. And I thought there's a driveway and a garage beside, that there's no disruption from the neighbor's view on either side. And I looked at it and say, there's not a good reason to say he shouldn't be allowed to build. And I, I know that, uh, we need consistency in our ordinances. Uh, I, I like the idea of, I think if your neighbors are okay with it and, you know, and all the way around and, and you have a structure and it's, as long as it doesn't create a safety hazard and our abstract view for potentially future homeowners that might want to buy the house next door, it, it, that we should find a way to improve the quality of life for the residents in, in our city. So that's where I was coming from. Uh, I, I think, uh, I, I think these are, are, are good options. And, uh, you know, I would, I would, I guess I would ask, the five feet would include the roof structure or couldn't come out over the?
Currently, currently the way the ordinance reads is you can encroach into that area 18 inches. So basically a foot and a half into that. So you're about three and a half feet away.
Okay. So it would leave three and a half feet in the back. And, and, and I think that is a good, you know, that's an acceptable compromise, I think for, you know, you know, we don't want to create a law for everybody for one person. And I understand that, but...
I probably should add too, are, this correlates a little bit with some of the setbacks we did a few years ago. So the setback for most of the residential lots, whether it be a primary structure or not, is five feet when it's an internal lot. So this would be consistent with that. I think our setbacks are consistent with that, but it would, uh, in this particular one, it would make the rear consistent for accessory structures that are open if you chose to go down that route.
Councilor Blackson?
A couple of questions. Uh, is the building, is the 10-foot building to, uh, building fire separation distance applied to all zoning districts?
It's, it's a residential code and a commercial code requirement. So it, it applies across the board. Yes.
So it does, even like Cambridge Crossing with the zero lot lines, that's 10 feet?
Yeah. We typically set those ordinances up to be 10 feet between buildings because what that allows is openings along both sides of the property. Uh, if you're familiar with, uh, like zero lot line houses, a lot of times when you get closer to that, you have that blank wall. And so that's where that 10 feet comes from. And so each unit could, um, have windows on both sides. It definitely can be closer, but you get into firewalls and construction issues from a, so, from a simplicity standpoint, 10 feet seems to be the magic number.
Okay. I was just making sure that it applied to like the zero lot Cambridge stuff.
Yep.
And then, uh, so I know we've kind of beat this to a pulp. And my question is, is how does, how do these changes you're proposing compare to the, um, accessory structure ordinances that Plano passed? Is it's, are we more restrictive, less restrictive, or can they have a mother-in-law suite back there or whatnot? I know why past councils did it. I know they were trying to li- limit the amount of people living in a house, but you know, obviously things have changed and multi-generational living is something that is true and occurs these days. So with that being said, does our ordinance precludes that right now?
Correct. So these changes that I'm proposing here do absolutely nothing with the detached dwelling. Um, that stays the same unless we want to go down that path at another time. So this is just some slight tweaks to hopefully address very few scenarios with respect to accessory structures. Typically the smaller storage sheds and any open patio structure. So it wouldn't address, uh, even if we allowed detached living quarters, it wouldn't address that because those are enclosed with these proposed changes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Lynn?
Hugh, is there a limit to the number of accessory buildings that a resident can have on their property?
There is not. So when we opened, uh, or made the changes to the accessory structure ordinance, we added square footage limits. And then there's lot coverage issues, but there's not a number set to I can have one or two or three.
Well, there are residents in, uh, the city that have multiple buildings on their property and, uh, people have complained about that.
Right.
So, uh, I think if we're going to put something in place, we need to start limiting the number of, uh, accessory buildings if we're looking to, uh, improve this ordinance.
Yeah. Keep in mind here, this is a definite relaxation of the current ordinance in certain scenarios.
Well, in certain scenarios. So, uh, but I would like to see something that limits the number because I, I can tell you in, in my own district, there's places that have two and three that I know of that people complain of. And, uh, I don't know if there's anybody that has more than three, but this is, it's a problem.
Right. And this, one of the options was screening it with a fence, which is, is definitely makes it very more difficult to find and see. So.
Okay. Well, I sent you one last week that was going up and yeah, they had an eight-foot fence and this was accessory structure that was even taller than the eight-foot fence.
Right.
So, uh, whether people are adhering or not, how, how we educate them I think is key.
Absolutely.
Uh, to everything that we do. So, um, you know, I, I don't really have any problems one way or the other with, with what you've proposed here, uh, for this, but I, I would like to see some limit to the number of structures that people can have and then how we are able to deal with that in the event that there are multiple.
Well, if, if this pushes forward, the entire article, it, it would have to go back through Plano and something because it is part of the comprehensive zoning ordinance. And it would come back through you all as well before it became an option. So it's definitely, that's what we're here to talk about is this specifically. But if there's other issues that need to be addressed, we can address that in the ordinance at the time.
Well, I mean, we have something on the agenda later on this evening and somebody wants to, uh, make a guest house, if you will. And even though they say their intent is to not rent it out, well, that may be their intent today, but economics change. We don't know what they're going to do tomorrow. We don't know if when they sell that house, somebody else doesn't buy it to, to, uh, run a boarding house out of the back and put up accessory structures.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, these are changes, um, that we've talked about in specific cases, but this would be a citywide ordinance change. So it would be eligible for other places as well within the city, all zoning districts.
Do we know if other cities have limits on the number of accessory structures?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, um, I would say that's probably not out of the question in some places. Um, obviously in other places, they have very little restriction on accessory structures, uh, themselves. I think we're one of the few cities that require a permit. So we've taken steps over the years to try and curtail that. But yeah, the people that are going to build it, uh, that are going to do it without a permit is behind a screen fence. It's very hard to find.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilor Norwood?
I think these changes are fine. Uh, just to respond to Councilman Lynn, I, I would not look at more restrictions on number of accessory structures. If people are offended, I think they should stop looking in their neighbor's backyard and that we have a very low interest in what people do in their backyards in the city. And we should allow people to do, to have full enjoyment of their property. Most of the requests we get are for pergolas and for, uh, you know, covered patios and that kind of thing. We, you know, we've been going around this and around this for six years now on how many square feet and how many, you know, how, and with the intent of trying to prevent people from creating a, a dwelling unit. And I, I think, you know, I would be supportive. So when you bring this to PNC, I would be supportive of us considering at least looking at the Plano ordinance because it doesn't apply across the board. It applies, as I understand, to our one and our two properties that have more expansive space and are able to do that. So I don't want to be more restrictive. I want to have people enjoy their properties. And I think these changes are fine.
Councilmember Tom?
Um, I don't have any objections. Uh, my biggest thing is safety. So, um, it seems like that's still something where, um, it's not obstructing, that's still a safe manner for individuals to be able to, um, put these types of things on their backyard. So I have no objections to that, to the options that you proposed. Thank you for, for your help with that.
No objections here either. Um, does anyone else have any additional comments? Seeing, and I think as it pertains to this specific issue, you kind of have some direction in terms of moving forward.
We will bring that back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is A4, discussion regarding a proposed ordinance number 3647, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Code of Ethics, by amending Section 2-278 definitions to add definitions to campaign contributions and discretionary contract in amenu- amending annual certification and adding Sections 2-287 prohibiting campaign contributions to city council candidates. And so, you know, when we discussed this earlier this year, um, we kind of all agreed that we would bring it back after the elections. And so here we are, uh, after the elections. And for me, I still maintain kind of the position that if you have a contract with the city in any way, shape or form, uh, you should be excluded or not allowed to donate to any candidate that might have an opportunity to, uh, weigh in or influence any decision that could benefit you, uh, just in terms of, you know, being on the up and up and looking at things objectively. I feel even if you have a $5 contract or a $10 million contract, um, that those things should be excluded. Uh, and, you know, something that I did want council to discuss one more time because as we go forward, at least for near term, this isn't going to benefit or take away from anyone. So, uh, with that, I'm willing to open it up to anyone that might have some points or things that they want to consider as it relates to, uh, this ordinance.
Yeah, I, uh, understand the thought process behind making changes, but because of the, you know, the things that we can control, but there are plenty of things that we can't control. And we already have a plethora, more than I would like to see personally, packs or groups of people getting together and putting out, uh, you know, flyers that many times are dishonest, uh, at best. And, and, you know, this will, i- if, if we limit at least people who are receiving and documenting the money they're getting, at least we know and the citizens know where it's coming from and, you know, can come to their own conclusion. But to me, I, I think we just encourage... But to me, I think we just encourage, if we, the people who are going to make those contributions are going to find a way to make them through some other organization and we're going to have less transparency than more transparency. And I know that's not the intention of the deal, but I think it is the unintended consequence of becoming more restrictive.
Thank you. Councilor Blackson.
You know, obviously this is, this is not new. We've, I've spoken up about this numerous times and my position remains unchanged. I feel like this is a great way to, to level the playing field when it comes to running for office here in Farmers Branch. I don't think it should cost $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 run from here here, and that's what it does cost. And that's just blows my mind. You have cities that are four or five times as big as Farmers Branch, it doesn't cost near that much money to run for office. And so that's what this is. It takes the, the ability for the average resident to be able to run for political office and this really enables them to. It levels the playing field. So, you know, my position remains unchanged. You know, we'll see where this goes and obviously I've only got like two and a half more hours, so.
So I think I drove the, put it off till after the election on the last discussion. I guess I'm actually okay with, with putting this in. If somebody is actively doing business in Farmers Branch, they, I don't know that we need them in the political process. This creates, you know, and here's what they teach you in, in the army, when you sign the ethics agreement in the army is that you want to avoid impropriety and the appearance of impropriety. And so even though they're, and I agree with you, Mike, it's hard, it'd be hard to regulate, you know, and it may create a proliferation of PACs. But we want to avoid, we want to be on the up and up. We want to make sure that, that the people that, the money that, that is taken to run for political office is visible and that it doesn't create this appearance, you know, and sometimes the appearance is worse than the actual because it, it's not warranted, right? And, you know, I think that was, goes back to the discussion we had, had earlier. Sometimes the, it's an appearance and people are so prone to this day to jump to conclusions when things may not be true. And, and so I could support this. I don't know that it goes necessarily far enough. Somebody else has probably got better information, maybe Crystal, but doesn't Austin have like a $250 or something campaign limit? That would be the kind of thing that I would be looking for is, is let's get back to running grassroots campaigns and knocking on doors and getting, you know, $25, $50 contributions and, and keeping, you know, keeping our overall costs low. This whole thing, you know, it's really turned my, my stomach the last two election, election cycles and, you know, these reforming PACs and we're sending out, you know, damaging and untrue anonymous flyers and it's just not, that's not what I want to be in, in Farmers Branch. I'd rather have us, you know, get, get a bunch of people together that can support somebody. $250 doesn't seem to be, to me, to be so low that you couldn't gather, you know, 100 people at $250 is a, is a lot of money, right? And that's enough money to run a campaign. So I could support this, but I could support going a little bit, a little bit further. And I know Blackson probably didn't expect to hear that from me.
Councilor Whitaker.
I think it all comes down to perception and my, my stance on this has not changed. I do feel like we need these types of things, you know, to your point, Councilmember Norwood. I do think doing something like that and taking it that step further would allow for individuals to feel like they can be up here and, and get engaged and, and get involved because I, sometimes I feel like the political process sometimes creates barriers for some folks. And I think this would create a sense of, you know, especially with the recent elections, regardless of how you voted, I think the beauty was that we had so many more people getting engaged and getting informed and I think there needs to be more of that. And so as it relates to this particular issue, Mayor, my, my thoughts have not changed. I, I'm definitely supportive of this and, and it does create that transparency that's needed, albeit, you know, to your point, Mike, I feel like, you know, it may create that, but I think that at least for us as a city, we've done our due diligence to say that we want people, individuals to be transparent and we're not going to allow that because we don't want to give that perception that some individuals may be favoring others and get in the way of the political process and what we're trying to do up here. So again, I am supportive in that next step and maybe bringing something like that into the fold and creating an even more transparent political process when it comes to limiting our contributions again may allow for other individuals to feel like they have the opportunity to be up here and be able to, to be a voice for, for their community. So thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Lynn.
So I really feel like this is an attempt to try to create a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. We are required by law to fill out campaign finance reports that state who has given a candidate money. And I almost feel like I'm, I'm more defending this for my opponent in the last election than anything else because my opponent received a $10,000 contribution from one individual. That just shows you money doesn't always work, okay? I don't really think it's about the money per se. Anybody can run for public office. They have that opportunity and if they've done a good grassroots campaign and are known in the, in the city or throughout the city, then they might do pretty well, whether they have a, a big war chest or not. But I receive numerous emails or, excuse me, numerous mailers from candidates, not only in the city, but even beyond. I mean, if you look at the congressional race, eight or 19 different mail pieces came to my house. Thirty, over $30 million was spent in that race. I don't want to take anybody's First Amendment right away to support the candidate of their choosing. I think by trying to limit finance or who can contribute is going to open the door or could open the door for some backroom dealings, underhanded dealings, whatnot. I'd rather know that, oh, so-and-so took money from a developer. Okay, well, has that swayed their opinion? Has that, does that in and of itself make them a bad person? Is it against the law? No. But it's their, it's their right to do that and they have, any, every candidate has the obligation as required by law to report who is providing them funding. So I'm not sure if there's something else that's driving this or not. I'm more worried about what the ordinance would create that we're not seeing now. So I know we're not voting on this tonight, but we're, we're discussing it and it might behoove us to just think a little further about this. And I wrote down that, you know, we had ethics policy in place that didn't stop somebody else from not working honorably for the city. And I, I, I think everybody up here is better than that. And, and again, I'm, I'm not going to work, I'm not going to limit what, what somebody feels is, is their right to help their candidate of choice in any election.
As a point of reference, I had several, a right-leaning group and a left-leaning group of people come to me and encouraged me to run. And they said they would help me raise funding and they raised equal amounts for me. Some of the contributions, several of them were larger than 250 or 500 from both sides. And for me, I probably, if, if I had to go out and raise the funding, I probably wouldn't have run. And maybe there's, you know, people here have said that would have been a good thing, but, you know, each to their judgment. But I, I think that also, you know, might make it more difficult for people who aren't as, you know, connected. I don't, you know, knowing that somebody was going to help me with that part of the process, not being a politically active person up to that point in time, would have, would have, you know, made me say no a fourth time, probably.
You know, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Lynn and Councilmember Baumgartner, and I honestly feel that if someone's going to do backdoor dealings, they're going to do it whether you have to report it this way that we're doing now or the new way. That's a character flaw that is within whoever that person is, regardless of what the rules are. What these rules were intended to do is to, as Councilmember Norwood said, eliminate any appearance of impropriety or any favoritism towards someone who has given you campaign contributions. This isn't limiting any resident or business or anyone from giving funding. It is purely on the basis of, do you have a contract with the city? Might this person be voting on something that is to your benefit? And getting rid of that is something that I think we should, you know, strive for in terms of, hey, they didn't donate to three different candidates and now it's yes votes across the board for whatever they might need. On the appearance, whether they took the money under the table or not, is that you are doing this of your own will and of the opinion that you think is the best for the community with no slant towards people saying you're this or you're that or you're only doing this because of these reasons, the fact that they gave you that money. And that is what trying to eliminate here is purely on the basis of, you know, removing that appearance. And, you know, I would be in favor of limits as well. You know, I talk to other mayors, other council members all the time in other cities and they're astonished at what it costs to run a campaign in the city of Farmers Branch, who in most times is smaller than their city. And, but, you know, for here, I was trying to find an ordinance that I think met kind of halfway from some of those instances and where, you know, a lot of the big donors, if you go through our finance campaign reports, come from some of these sources. And, you know, how do we eliminate that to put things on a level playing field? If you can go out and raise $25,000 on number of campaign, you know, from contributions from people within the city that, you know, support you, believe in you and want you to run and be a voice for those people, you know, you still have that opportunity. It's how many doors are you willing to knock on, how many dollars are you able to get, but from these certain sources is unallowed. And, you know, I think, like I said, whether you have a $5 contract with the city or a $5 million contract with the city, if you're working with the city on behalf of the city in any aspect, it's just a non-starter. And that's, that's what I was trying to do with this ordinance to at least put in some kind of campaign finance reform. But, you know, based on what Councilmember Norwood has said, what Councilmember Whitaker said, and I know what Councilmember Blackson believes, you know, I too could support some level of campaign contribution limit, which I think the original number discussed a year and a half ago was 500, you know, which is double what it is in Austin. And, and just set some kind of limit. And then you're in a position to where you don't have to worry about one person writing a $10,000 check against you. The most they could write is 500. I know it doesn't bother you, I'm just saying, you know, the amount of times you've brought that up as an example, I'm looking at it as that also removes that opportunity from a lot of individuals in the city, whether they're for someone or against someone, you know, it makes you go out and talk to the people, earn their trust, earn their backing through their dollars. And for a lot of people, I think it, you know, allows people that feel they don't have the financial means because they're like, how am I going to raise $20,000 to run a race? You know, does that bring it back into what it used to be, into a more tolerable level that gets more people involved and more people excited to run for, you know, a cause or beliefs that they want to champion? So that was kind of the intent behind some of this, but, you know, if, if it's council's direction to maybe move forward and throw in limits, I'm fine with that, but I'm still on a base level in favor of this, just as it is, as a starting point for some level of reform in Farmers Branch. And so, you know, I'll go one more time kind of around the table and let everyone speak and then we'll kind of figure out where we want to go from there, if we just want to let it sit and think on it again. But, you know, that's kind of my thoughts. Councilmember Whitaker.
I have more of a, of a point of clarification. So would this be specifically to like corporations, businesses? Will it also include like individuals that may work for, you know, 501(c)(3), 501(c)(7), those types of individuals? Is that something that we're going to also be discussing as part of this or is it just anybody across the board that has, regardless of what type of entity you are, has some type of agreement with the city?
It would be if you have an agreement with the city. So if you are a 501(c)(3), yeah, but, I mean, you're just...
Sure, sure. No, but that's what I mean, all across the board.
If you're handling just the paper towels, like, you know...
Sounds good. Thank you. Just a point of clarification. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Norwood.
So, yeah, I can support it. And the only question that I raised, a couple of things come to mind is, one, Councilman Blackson let us know, he's got about two hours left on here, so we really need to consider where Councilmember-elect Driscoll comes down on this. So we at least got to talk about it, you know, within the context, even if we tee it up as, as a, for action in December. And so there, there's one point. The other thing is occurred to me is that include in-kind donations? So food and catering and that kind of thing to a campaign or would it would just be strictly monetary?
Yeah, Charles has...
The way the ordinance is, is structured, it indicates that campaign contribution shall have the same meaning as provided in Section 251-001 of the Text Election Code that includes money, goods, services, loans, or any other thing of value given the candidate's campaign or treasurer.
Okay, so somebody that says, you know, I'll give you signs or something, that would be out.
Yes, that's, that's part of it.
Okay. I'm just trying to, one of the boundaries of this thing, kind of like, and then if we're going to do say, is it, is it good to move forward with something like this and then come back later with a different discussion on campaign contribution limits or should we bundle it together? That's so, that's more of a question for me. I'm, I'm more of the, you know, why piecemeal something, why don't we do the whole thing? But then I understand, you know, if you try to do the whole thing, you may never get to do anything. And I've seen that a number of times. So like I said, I, I would be in favor of this. And so I think we've probably got two to, three to two on the current council and we need to poll Councilman-elect Driscoll to, on his opinion.
Councilor Lynn.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I've made my position clear. I really don't think that there's an issue here. And what I see us trying to do is, is be more restrictive, which is something that you've been sort of against in, in, in some regards of operating the city. But we have a reporting mechanism. I believe that it works. And... And I would rather know who is providing funding and how much. And I just, I think that anytime you cut off somebody's ability to donate, they're going, or limit somebody's ability to donate, they're going to look for other opportunities to try to funnel money to a particular candidate. That's just what they're going to do. They want a support person they believe in. And I'd rather have it up front, out in the open, like Texas Ethics Commission already requires candidates to do.
Councilmember Baumwerner.
I understand the purpose and I agree with the purpose in the message that it sends. I, I just think, I look at the execution of it, even, you know, the Blackson family, right? They provide bricks and stone to buildings in the city in the past, probably would in the future. You know, would that prevent him from making a contribution to a candidate as a citizen, a resident, and his wife, and his brother, and his dad? You know, is, you know, you start getting down into it and it, you know, I think we, you know, and then you're going to say, well, you can see that on the forum, right? You can see where it's coming from. But we can see now if it's above board. And again, I just, I agree with the principle. I, I think, I think the execution at the end of the day will drive more money underground than above ground. And that will be the unintended consequence of the policy. Where in my heart, I feel like, I feel like this is something that's easy, this is something we should support. But I can't imagine how we enforce the execution and to make a law or a program that you can enforce is, we do that too much. Not Farmers Branch, but, you know, the US.
Councilmember Blackson.
Okay, so I dug up some of my notes because I don't have my city device anymore. I lost all my Granicus notes. It's terrible. Okay, so I looked at my notes and when we talked about this in January, we talked about this last April. And my, one of my ideas was a $500 baseline contribution per election, not election cycle election. So if there was a runoff, if there was a prior, a regular election and then they could donate $500, if there's a runoff, they could do it as well. And so it was, like Austin's, it was to be adjusted for inflation moving forward. And I think Austin started at 350 and I think the inflationary value now is closer to 500 or 600. But the intent of this baseline contribution limit was to prevent, just like the mayor said, the actual corruption as well as the appearance of corruption. So as a business owner, that's where I, I look at it as if I'm going to pay one of my employees to make a donation to a candidate, because that's how this all works, everyone hadn't figured it out, I'm only doing so because it's going to benefit my business. Why else would a business or a developer come in and donate to a campaign if the developer's not going to be on what could be the receiving end of a vote in favor of their development? And that's the whole, the whole purpose of this is, is I think the mayor's trying to, to stop the people that are doing business with the city, whether they have a development agreement or another type of business with the city, from donating to campaigns because it, unfortunately, it sways elections. Whether you want to see it, say it does or not, it does. And it's a, I think this is a good start. And hopefully, you know, when Mr. Driscoll gets his chance to weigh in on this, he could be completely on the opposite end of me and this is over with. So we don't know. But y'all will be able to have that conversation and, and figure out what's going to work best. But, you know, I've made it clear and this is, this only levels the playing field. It only opens the door. It forces candidates to see more residents, to talk more residents, and to knock more doors and to do small transactions, you know, the $20 grant, the $20 donation or the $50 donation, not relying on, you know, multiple $2,000 donations or multiple $500 donations. So that's, that's the whole intent, so.
Okay. Well, it seems like we essentially have, you know, kind of a three to two to push this towards a discussion either December or January and allow Mr. Driscoll to kind of weigh in. It seems, you know, that might ultimately be the deciding vote. But, you know, just for a point of reference, you know, this is something that the city of Irving already does and has been doing for a while, which is where a lot of this kind of conversation came from in terms of just talking through, you know, what they do and how their elections go. And so it's not like we just pulled it out of thin air. There is some case study behind it and some other cities that are doing certain things, much like Councilmember Blackson has alluded to with Austin and, you know, even if we looked at limits. But I'm going to say for now, I think we've discussed this enough and we'll move, move it to a future agenda item to potentially look at passing the ordinance as it is or making any amendments or, you know, throwing it out for the final time, you know, at least during my administration. So, you know, that's, that's what I want to recommend. And so with that, we will move on to A5, which is discuss future agenda items. Councilmember Otana.
Councilmember Norwood.
No, thank you.
I'm going to put a few things out there. I would like to talk about looking at funding mechanisms to start working on that parks plan in terms of, what are we doing, signature parks and some of the other parks that we might want to look to do that we might have some opportunity to take advantage of in the near future. I also want to take a look at kind of code enforcement reform. I know we're taking a look at code right now, but essentially what I want to do is form a committee where each council member basically puts two residents of their choosing from their district into kind of a committee that will go through that to be a representative body that will be citizen-led with two council members in staff to kind of go through this series of maybe four meetings to not only go through the code, but speak to residents in your district, gather input on what is important to everybody to come back to council, to where we can look at getting rid of some things that, in my opinion, are just a pure overreach, such as the number of pots that you can have in front of your house. And how can we boil down to what is it exactly we want our code enforcement officers to focus on and be, you know, focused in the intent of how we want our city to look and feel and what's important to us and kind of bring that back to us and refine that. So that's something I want to look at in the future. Councilmember Lynn.
I'd like to have a discussion about homelessness in the city and the effect that it's having on our business residents. I'm in receipt of a letter from Boxer Property. I don't know if anybody else responded to them, indicating that they're having issues with homeless in and around their six properties here in Farmers Branch. Also, as relates to code enforcement, and I guess perhaps building instruct, building inspection was made aware of a house that's been in the process of remodel for approximately six years and neighbors are just fed up with the general ice ore, constant trash, dumpsters, and broken driveway. So we need to at least have a discussion about this and how we can try to provide some, I guess, relief to existing communities where HOA rules are not enough to be effective in this situation.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Baumwerner.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Blackson, last chance.
I just wish you all the best on all these future agenda items.
Thanks. All right. With that, I'm going to read in executive session, B1, "Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Section 551-072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property located south of Alwood, west of Jersey Lane, north of Valley View, east of B Street, and Farmers Branch, Texas." We will recess and do executive session upstairs. The time is 4:36. Thank you.